Now. Okay, we're recording. This will be recorded. Calls a meeting to order. And Greg, would you read the the rules and take a roll call?
Absolutely. Let me do the roll call first. Brian Height.
Present.
Diane Kelly. Not present. Bill McNair.
Here.
Matt Mulqueen.
He left notice that he will not be here.
Not present. Alan Tope.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
There are four members present. Four are required for a quorum. We have a quorum. So let me, let me read the rules. We've just coming out of the agenda review. We are now moving into the public meeting. If you are accessing the meeting electronically and desire to make a comment, please type your full name and address in the chat box. That's the little icon that looks like a speech bubble in the upper right hand corner. During the courtesy of the floor, your name will be read and you will have three minutes to make your comments. Time will be allotted for comments from those who are accessing the meeting by phone only. Speakers again will be limited to three minutes. When called upon, the speaker must identify themselves by name and address prior to making their comments. And at all times, please mute your microphone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will under the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. All right, that's will go on. That's completes agenda item number one. And I'm trying to be careful, more careful about this as we go. The gentleman I number two is approval of minutes and we have minutes for the March 18th and the April 15th 2021 meeting. So we'll start with the March 18. Minutes. Are there any comments? On those. Hearing none.
Hold on one second. I have a question. Was Al, were you at that meeting?
I thought I was, but.
I don't see you listed and then I'm not sure if we have enough people to vote that were there. That's all.
You did miss one.
Yeah, I have you on the March 18th, but not the April 15th.
But that sounds more like it because I think I think you have me listed as making one or two comments in this meeting.
Yes.
So I presume I must have been there.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a a quorum on that on this one. I see what you're saying, Brian. So that'll that'll make a difference on the next one, I guess, or could.
Correct.
So. Are there any other comments? Motion to approve?
Don't move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Brian, second by Alan. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, good. Now. Should we just table the since we don't have a we'll we'll put the other one off until next meeting?
Yes.
Because we don't have a quorum of people who attended that meeting? Good catch, Brian.
Thank you. I actually jumped the gun to the the March one. Anyway, we got to figure out.
That's all right. I would gone right by that. So good, good catch. Okay.
According to my notes, I was in Florida for the second meeting.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So that takes care of agenda item two, and we will carry the April 15th meeting minutes to the next meeting for approval. Agenda item number three, comprehensive plan. Update summary on. I don't know if.
Is Dave still present?
Dave still here?
Okay.
Um, so just to give a quick update, we can get into it in a little more detail later on in the meeting. We have been working with the modelers. So Todd Poole is with Forward Planning is working on a fiscal impact model. And then Scott Pesterzki with Keystone Consulting Engineers is working on a traffic model. And the inputs for that model are all based on the where should we grow exercises that we did with the public and then the how should we grow visual preference survey? Greg and I kind of analyzed the information of where and how and made some assumptions and applied that to a build out scenario based on those wheres and hows. That information was then prepared and funneled over to the modelers and they plug that into their model. So we can look at what the fiscal impacts of that scenario are the fiscal impacts and the traffic impacts of that scenario. So that's kind of where we are in the process. We talked to both of the modelers and they're confident that they can have that done in a couple of weeks. So that targets us as the I guess, the first full week in June is what we're currently targeting as the working group introductory meeting where we present all of the wheres, the hows, the build out scenarios and the the results from the models. And then that information gets packaged and given to all of the working group members for the subsequent meeting, individual working group meetings to take place in the next, I believe, what did we say, four weeks? Try and get them all out. And then we come back together and working groups present findings. Looking at sometime in July for that. And once we get to that point, then it becomes time for planning commission to sift through those recommendations and put together a comprehensive plan.
Okay, do we have to post notice for the first meeting in June?
We will.
And is there a requirement on how much ahead of the meeting?
I will defer to Greg.
I actually think as long as we don't have a quorum from any particular board, this would be just an informational posting. So.
So this would be for the would be the the big meeting, the introductory meeting. Is that what you're referring to, Bill, or the individual working group meetings?
Well, actually, both of them, but the the first one is sooner. So I'm just interested if there's any.
That one I kind of anticipate, you know, roughly a full planning commission and full B O C to be at. So we would notice that one consistent with how we noticed other work. The last kickoff meeting. Individual working group meetings. We're hoping that we don't have quorums present at the working group meetings. So that we don't have to notice for them because they'll be fast and furious and they're going to be stacked up and there's going to be a whole bunch of them. Kind of intense couple of weeks getting through those. So that's kind of the intention for those working group meetings.
Oh, you have three of us?
I believe it's three.
Three and two.
Yeah, three planning, two B O C.
Oh, okay. So that would be the maximum at any of those meetings if we don't give notice. Do we want to give notice on them anyway?
Just in case. We will get, yeah, we'll be giving notice, but it won't be like the newspaper notice. We'll certainly have it on the website and you know, I envision will eventually get to, you know, posts, blog posts and email blasts and things like that for the full schedule. But I don't envision doing a full newspaper formal notice as it's not required.
Okay, but then that does require that we schedule each other to make sure we're separate.
Yes, and we've we've had signups and a lot of the planning commission has already signed up for working groups. So I think we'll treat it on a first come, first served basis. If there's a conflict, we may have to settle by roshambo or arm wrestling.
What do you do? What's the roshambo?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Oh, okay. I can handle that. All right.
Yeah. But it's been when last time we looked at him, it was pretty spread out and we had a good coverage. I don't think we had big.
Okay.
I don't think we had more than three of one of the planning commission and one of the working groups.
Is there a time requirement before the meeting to make that this notice for the first for the first meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
How many days?
It's two advertisements generally no more than 30, no less than seven and at least seven days apart. So we're looking depending upon when the meeting date is. We're looking between 15 and 20 days notice time, time lead.
We're not far from that.
Yeah, we're not far from that. So we have to set the date in stone.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. You may want to push to later in the week. If you want to keep it that week, we always go a week later, I guess.
Yeah, that's definitely going to be a driver is determining what when we can get the public notice out. The other thing I want to mention about the the working groups is we're hoping that stakeholders, so business owners, property owners, you know, managers of shopping centers are available for some of these working groups to get their perspective on what they would like to see in the comp plan. So it's kind of the the opportunity for the public to focus on individual topic areas that are of interest to them. So it's kind of a big piece to the puzzle, so to speak. And we're hoping to get as much engagement as we can. So again, the sales pitch, you know, please invite friends, family. If you know any business contacts or landowners, you know, please reach out and encourage them to participate in this part of the process.
Okay. Going back to the timing, you said that the two modelers will be doing the economic and traffic model and you said a couple of weeks. Then that takes you to the first week in June.
Yes. And then that would put us, you know, it'll take us some time to kind of package that material. The piece that we're working on is every working working group will have a specific workbook to work through that process. So there'll be, you know, the intention is with that workbook, it kind of sets the framework for those meetings. And everybody gets on the same page as to what deliverables are goals for the meeting and outcomes for each of the meetings. So once we get the model information that gets plugged into the workbook, so that'll take some time to get that in and kind of deciphered, if you will. So that's kind of why we had that week in between to get that piece ironed out.
The week in between
between they're done, like the two weeks and then the next week have the meeting.
Okay.
So that last week of May over into June, we're anticipating them being complete. And then that following week, depending on when we schedule the meeting, we would be compiling that workbook or incorporating that information into the workbooks.
Okay. Just curious, do you want? That's pushing it. It's in my mind. I'm okay if it's if you're okay, but you know, do you want to see this stuff first before you?
Yes. Yeah, and that that's part of it. You know, we're we're kind of balancing. It's taken a long time. And we're certainly cognizant of that and we want to try and, you know, keep it moving as best we can, but we also acknowledge that, you know, we need to do our preparation and make sure we're presenting accurate information. So that's kind of the balancing act that we as staff are going through. And just to piggyback on that, we're bringing in. So we have Michael Baker assisting us. Looking at getting an intern and some additional help to get this across the finish line, if you will.
Okay. All right. I'll let you judge on it. To me, it seems you may want to think about pushing the other dates back a little.
I do appreciate that, Bill. It certainly is helpful. I mean, the other piece of it, you know, in community development, we've kind of been anticipating a slowdown, but we've been doing that for almost a year and a half, two years, waiting for that slowdown. So we've been busy with, you know, day to day stuff. So I appreciate that and we will certainly get it as soon as we can without rushing.
All right. Okay. And we have time later, I guess, your anything else, David?
Not really on the comp plan. That was that's pretty much where we are. You know, it later we could talk about how we kind of envision the planning commission's involvement, but we kind of covered that at the last meeting. But we can talk, talk about that.
Okay. All right. All right. So we can talk about this some more later on. Are you going to take off now, David, or are you, how are you feeling?
I'm going to try and hang in there.
Okay.
Somebody might have to nudge me to wake me up, but not that it's not interesting stuff.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Then we will. Thanks, David. We will move on to agenda item four. Yeah.
We still have an opening on planning commission. I don't know if you wanted to mention that or not.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we do have an opening on planning commission. The form I guess is on the webpage. And that will be worked on the the with the board, board commissioners to get that filled. So there is an opening available. Okay. There's something at the beginning, but okay. Now. Okay, now moving on to agenda item number four, the subdivision review. And we have one this week this month. It's the proposed flex building 1215 Housman Road. Major Plan 2018 dash 106. And it's a request for preliminary final plan review. This will have a staff presentation and applicant presentation courtesy of the floor. And then the planning commission decision. So Greg, I'll turn it over to you for the staff presentation.
Okay. This is an application to develop the property located at 1215 Housman Road. The plan proposes the raising of the existing barn and the construction of a 90,100 square foot flex building, an 89 car parking lot, truck court, and associated stormwater management facilities on the 10.7 acre tract. The subject property is zoned IC1 industrial commercial one special height limitation. Lee Boots is the owner and Forge Development Group is the applicant. Relevant previous township consideration. At their February 18, 2021 meeting, the planning commission reviewed and took under advisement a preliminary final plan for proposed flex building 1215 Housman Road, major plan 2018 106. On February 17, 2020, Forge Development Group filed an application for appeal 2020 dash oh two 1215 Housman Road Warehouse for a variance from the requirement for 450 feet of road frontage for a warehousing and distribution use. The applicant with the application was subsequently withdrawn by the applicant on December 1st, 2020. On November 21st, 2019, the Forge Development Group submitted an application for conditional use review 2019 601 1215 Housman Road Warehouse. The application was withdrawn from the December 19, 2019 planning commission agenda prior to the meeting at the request of the applicant. The application itself is still active. And finally, at their October 18, 2018 meeting, the planning commission reviewed major sketch plan 2018 106 proposed flex building 1215 Housman Road. The community department recommends, community development department recommendation. The department recommends that the planning commission recommend preliminary file final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to the township and its solicitor that sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws presentation no farther than 60 miles from the township's office and evidence of necessary insurance coverage shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction of township engineer, the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida, as contained in his review later dated May 14, 2021. Three, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction of township water and sewer engineer, the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart, as contained in his review dated February 12, 2021. Four, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction of township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor, as contained in his reviews dated July 22, 2020 and January 11, 2021. Five, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department, the comments of Mr. Herb Bender, as contained in his review dated May 11, 2021. Six, that the applicant shall address to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department, the comments of Mr. Greg Adams, as contained in his review dated May 14, 2021. Seven, that the applicant shall comply with the October 15, 2018 recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Board. Eight, that the applicant shall address all issues and obtain all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. Nine, that the applicant shall obtain a letter from P A D E P and or L C C D approving the N P D E S permit application pursuant to sections 31214B2 Charlie and 31239E of Saldo. 10, that the applicant shall obtain a letter from P A D E P approving the sewage facilities planning module. 11, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right of way along the frontage of Housman Road to a width acceptable to the township. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of easement or deed of dedication in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and an opinion of record title prepared by the applicant's council indicating that the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor description for the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the current deed for the property showing current ownership and recites the deed book volume and page reference. 12, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to the township for accessing the water meter pit. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of easement in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and an opinion of record title prepared by the developers council indicating that the easement is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The developer shall furnish to the township solicitor or a description of the easement that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership and recites deed book volume and page reference. 13, that declaration of covenants and easements for management of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater facilities. 14, that the applicant shall reconcile all open invoices for township engineering and legal services services prior to the plan being recorded and 15, that the plan be revised and deemed to be clean prior to the presentation before the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission soft deadline to act on the plan is June 14, 2021. The hard deadline of the planet of the Board of Commissioners to act on the plan is July 14, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Greg. We'll turn it over to the applicant for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Blake Miles on behalf of the applicant. We've listened to the discussion, heard the proposed conditions of approval. There's nothing here of surprise or concern to us. There are several waivers that have been requested that have been recommended by staff. Just one comment that is of concern to me because I don't know how to make the township's concern go away. And that is that we hear again tonight that there is an active conditional use application. There is not. We've had correspondence previously. Mr. Adam raised the issue to me last week. I sent him an email on Friday saying there is or should not be an active zoning application of any kind relating to the conditional use. I don't know how to make it go away, but for the record, there is no conditional use application pending. What we are proposing here is a permitted use, which is a flex building for a speculative tenant, which has not been identified. We agree that at such time as a tenant is identified, if this, if the application is not on all fours with the definition of flex building, then the township certainly has the right to bring us through a different review process because the conditions may be different. So just to make that clear, I have two people with me tonight. Andy Baldo is here on behalf of Forge. Paul Suezak from Liberty Engineer Engineering is the design consultant. He's he's on the call. This is a property that's been owned by Lee Boots for many, many years. You may recall that his office offices, his corporate offices were across Housman Road from from this parcel for many years and office buildings that he's built and are now occupied by others when he moved downtown to Allentown. So with with that background, Andy, is there anything you would like to add before the board gets into conversation?
No, thank you for considering this. I appreciate the time and effort. It's been a long haul that we've been working on this building and, you know, we think it fits in to the surroundings. We understand with some help of staff, what the flex building use and definition is. A few months ago, we had a call and that was very helpful. So we could figure out what kind of tenants are we're going to try to attract here. And we understand what flex use is. It's a multiple of uses either from the same or different tenants. So we're excited about the project and I was listening to the earlier conversation at seven where I think is, I think is Mr. Height said something about manufacturing. We started talking about this use or this project, you know, we got approached by folks like L V E D C saying, hey, we need this kind of flexible R and D space, you know, everything that fits in that the flex definition. So you know, we appreciate everything that everybody's done. We look forward for your approval. We've listened to your comments over the past few months and, you know, we're here to ask for your approval.
Yeah, I appreciate one you sitting in on the seven o'clock and manufacturing this size of building newer building with new amenities is is scarce in the Lea Valley. I've talked to L V E D C through my employer at the Lea Valley Planning Commission. And I think you'd be able to attract some sort of either research development or incubator or even manufacturing. So I think this is a great fit for the surrounding buildings. So I appreciate you're going the flex route.
Sure. Thanks. That's all I had.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board, from the? Okay, any other questions, comments from the board, from the commission, Greg?
Yeah, just to address Blake's question. Um, what I'm actually looking for is simply a formal letter withdrawing the conditional use application. That, that's, that's all I'm really looking for.
Correct. And if I may chime in here, Greg, as well, Blake at Florida Harrier Zoning Officer. There, there were two separate applications. There was one for the zoning hearing board and one for the land development process. That's where the conditional use went in with Greg. So we did receive your withdrawal letter for the zoning hearing board. But the conditional use application remained open with Greg. So that might be where there's some confusion coming in. So it was addressed with zoning hearing board. But it was not the separate application for the conditional use was not addressed with Greg yet. So that's what he's trying to confirm with you.
That, that's fine. If, if you want a formal letter, I'll do that. I, I thought I was unequivocal in the email, but I'm happy to provide the letter.
Thank, thank you. Absolutely. And that, that is my trigger to shut the project down and return the escrow. Which I'm sure your client probably does want back.
That's the first one. That's, that's great news on my ears.
I, I was going to say he probably has forgotten that there was an escrow because it was two years ago.
And, and he wouldn't be the first, so we're, we're happy to send it back to him.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Greg, I have a question. You just went through 15 recommended conditions to an approval recommendation by the planning commission. During the agenda review, one of the topics that was raised and discussed was perhaps increasing the level of clarity. In plan note and ultimately a resolution of approval. With respect to a need to return to the township through the zoning permit process and possibly. Either go to the zoning hearing board or planning commission and commissioners if, for example. One of the flex uses that was wanting to go into the site were a warehouse, which is by its definition. In the township ordinance, a conditional use. And my question to you then is, is that concept already captured in the review letters? That need to be complied with, or does this need to be a separate condition?
Let me just check Laura's letter. She does make mention. Of something. I just want to make sure it's spelled out in her letter. She does basically state. Each proposed tenant's use would require zoning approval prior to the occupancy of the flex space. Other uses permitted within the zoning district may be included within the flex building, but all will be subject to a zoning permit review. Prior to initiation of the new use and each new use will be subject to appropriate regulations and approvals as required by the zoning ordinance. Now, I, I think that is probably good. But quite frankly, I would like to see a note on the site plan, the recorded plan. That says something, that states something similar so that that will be on the recorded plan and thus available to anyone who. You know, basically has this building into the future. So we can add that as a, as a requirement, a plan note. If, if there's no objection to that.
I, I, Mr. Zed, I really have no objection. I think the definition itself calls for it. It says this definition does not abbreviate any requirements. Of any individual use proposed within the flex space that are in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So I think it's captured both in Laura's letter and in the, in the definition. We're not walking away from it because it's in both places. So if it's also on the plan, and I, I think it's. A third shot at the same, third bite of the same apple.
Very good. I think we're all in agreement then. Okay.
That way there should be no confusion.
Correct. I think we started putting these on the plans a couple of years ago. So that things didn't get lost as employees change out, retire, new ones come and go. So that when a record plan was pulled, it was right there and we didn't have to. You know, dig through years of research and letters and, and meeting minutes. So it does make it much more simpler, user friendly, really quick for anyone. That gets the record plan to see the general notes that we place on there as a reminder. It just, it makes it really easier for everybody moving forward.
Okay, any other? Comments, questions from the planning commission? All right, hearing none. Will the courtesy of the floor?
I have nothing in the chat box. Um, any callers that would like to make a comment, please speak now or forever hold your peace. I hear nothing.
Okay.
Does the applicant need to request waivers? Votes for waivers?
Yeah, so that's, that's what we get to now. And the. First one. Was the one that, that you were, you talked about David is requiring infiltration areas to be 100 feet from the property line. So. Be a waiver request. To. Place the, the infiltration. What's the right term? Infiltration area. Within 100 feet of the proper line in, and. And did you want to put the, the, and to check the road?
Yeah, um, the, you know, based on Anthony's discussion. Earlier teams like, you know, the runoff isn't a major concern, but I do have concern about frosty potential. I, I think it would be reasonable, reasonable to. Have the, I believe Anthony, it's a two-year O and M period be extended to five years to. Give the township a little more protection in terms of frosty. Would, would the applicant be amenable to that?
Well, all for speak. I heard your earlier discussion, David, and I'm also a civil engineer and it makes some sense, I think, right? To, since we're going to be having water down there, I just don't know how we differentiate. An incident that may be caused by our wetlands being proximal to the road versus normal frost heat, right? The concept combined with, right? It's the details that we should figure out as long as everybody's reasonable. That makes sense to me from a hydrogeologic perspective.
I, I, I feel, you know, the specifics of that could be worked out with township staff and engineer. We won't need to get into that extended detail here. Unless.
No, no, I, I'm confident I can work with the staff. It, and then, you know, the duration would be defined. You know, is it arbitrary? Do, how many freeze thaw cycles will go through? But I'm happy to, to talk through the staff of that because I think it's a reasonable request.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel five years, you know, it extends it out a bit more to go through a few more frost. Winter cycles. I don't know if anyone else has, has any input.
I agree because we could have two mild winters in a row, but chances are we would have. Hopefully nothing like this last winter, but at least you'd be able to capture at least one impactful winter that you can at least monitor. So I agree.
Okay, so the, the waiver would be for infiltration area closer than 100 feet. To the property line at the street side of the. Property and there will be a review of the conditions for frost heave over the five year period. Does that make sense to word it that way?
Yeah, to extend the O and M to five years and to include. Any impacts from the wetlands frost heave.
Okay. How, how do you, how do you, Greg, do you have a wording for that or?
Put it into extended maintenance period, I think is maybe the best way to put it, an extended maintenance period. Because that, that's a process, holy maintenance is what the normal process is for 18 months. So I think that's maybe the way to do it. I'm looking at Joe.
I, I'd ask for a clarification on that in this manner. Extending the five years, if that's what you want to do, certainly fine with me. It's more of an engineering and a public works issue than it is a legal one. But recognize that typically a maintenance period is for maintaining the improvement that's been installed by the developer. In this case, the infiltration wetlands pond. The adjoining road area. Unless that's part of the improvements that are being constructed for this project. It's not part of the area that's being maintained under that 18 month maintenance period. So that's my question. I guess maybe a question for Greg or for Tony, but the, or David for that matter. The area that we're talking about being possibly impacted by frost heave. Is it going to be exclusively area being improved along the road frontage by this developer? Or does it extend beyond that?
I, I would say that the road frontage where the wetlands are and any road frontage within 100 feet. And limit it to that in terms of. The extended period, I would just limit it to the road for five years.
Okay, well, I, I understand your point, David. I, I think that if that's the intent, if that's what the planning commission feels is appropriate. Then we may be looking at some mechanism slightly different than just extending the 18 month maintenance period. It may be a covenant that would need to be in place for that five year period to address the roadway. Beyond the limits of improvement by this developer to include pre-existing roadway. Because we're talking about 100 foot in either direction I hear David suggesting. And I'm assuming that possibly the damage by frost heave could go farther out into Hausmann Road than just the area being added by this developer.
Can I comment on that, Joe? If, if the issue is the freeze and thaw cycle and that's part of the covenant, I'm fine with that. There's a lot of truck traffic on this road that's not ours, obviously. And there will be a lot more and pavement failure that's not related to a freeze and thaw cycle should not be part of this. If, if there's no undermining of the road by virtue of water, then this should not be our responsibility.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I agree with.
Okay.
Okay.
Essentially, I'm okay with what's been spoken to here then, and I'm sure a document to that effect can be drafted. But it will be a little bit different than just extending the 18 month maintenance period.
Joe, do you want to? Try a language for a condition, approval condition on that?
Just real quick, Tony, the image you're showing shows a widening. Of the road in that area. What's the width of that? And is that width adequate to address any freeze thaw? I can't see the number.
No problem. The existing road is somewhere. At a 25 foot cartway. Um, it looks like they're putting in, I think, five feet. It's obviously in the taper. I think about five feet in that location to give a 20 foot half width.
So I'm just thinking if that's being put in, that could get tied to the maintenance. If that's enough width for the freeze thaw to impact it. And then it could just get tied to the maintenance. Just a thought.
You know, that, that may make sense because we don't know the condition of the underlying pavement in Hausmann Road. Obviously, it's not, it's not a normal. Rebuilt road. And we don't know what conditions there may be under the roadway currently, but. We'll certainly know the condition of the portion of the road we build. So that would make it. It would be much more obvious that it's our responsibility if that would fail.
And I think the big question. Okay, the big question for me is, you know, if the new constructed road. Provides, you know, transmission like through gravel to the old portion of the road. Is it going to bypass the new piece of the road and go to the old piece? And that's kind of an engineering question.
Or under the gravel.
Yeah, go through the gravel, under the gravel into the other, the old side of the road. Just in another thing to be aware of and included in any decisions. Tony, any thoughts on that? Can you, can you determine what water will do underground?
Sure, in five years. Those are all good points. I mean, we don't know exactly, especially since we're not the geotech, but we don't know exactly which way this water is going to go, if it's going to go south, if it's going to go east. A lot of different things happening. I think these are all good points. I think that maybe we'll bring in the geotech report who reviewed the actual. Report produced by the applicant to see if what they feel, you know, if they feel it's going to go east. Then he can determine based upon his history and his education, if it, how, how far, how deep is it going to be a one to one slope, how fast that's going to get into the ground. If not. You know, if, 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 I think that we can. I think everyone's understanding of the issues and will discuss. I think that we can probably come to an engineering conclusion. I don't know if we can do it on the spot tonight, but I think that. The applicant side is willing to discuss these moments. We probably can get something together shortly.
What I'll offer then, given that I was asked to come up with a condition. Recognizing that the final language that would be in a document as part of an approval in front of the Board of Commissioners. Would come at a later date, but the suggested condition for tonight's purposes that would be that the developer has a responsibility for five years. To address road damage due to frost heave, also known as the freeze thaw effect along the perimeter of the property. And 100 feet in either direction along Hausmann Road from the perimeter of the property. With again, the actual language to be worked out at a later date.
Okay.
With regard to that one, Joe. Uh, what, what is, what is the later date? When, when are we likely, or I guess this is one for Tony. Uh, when, when can you get together with the geotech people so that Joe will have the information to clarify the condition? I think that we can probably get. I like to say a week, maybe get some language together with the geotech. I, I, you know, that might be with the holiday coming up. I don't know his schedule if he has, have an, had a vacation, but I would like to say. Get together a week, get some language together, probably get it over to the township, see if they're acceptable. I, I mean, I was asking the question because our current time limit runs in the middle of July. And if we can possibly get on a Board of Commissioners' agenda at the end of June. That avoids what is the inevitable vacation problem that everybody has in July and August. Perfect sense, Blake. That makes sense. We'll do our best to get it out as soon as we can. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a. So the words, wording is a. so the words, wording is a, mentioned by Joe, have a vote on that?
We need a motion.
Yeah, not quite.
Okay.
We're adding that as a condition of approval. So we've got two additional ones that I will restate when we go for approval.
Joe, can we limit that hundred feet to just hundred feet within one hundred feet of those wetlands instead of the entire property?
It's pleasure of the planning commission. I defer to Tony as to what might be needed, what's realistic, given the nature of the wetlands pond. And into David with regard to the freeze thaw effect, I'm not an expert in those things. But certainly you can limit it to a hundred feet in the direction from the pond instead of the property line, sure.
Yeah.
The way, the way that the specific ordinance reads is infiltration facilities to be set back a hundred feet from the property line. So if you so choose, the logic being that it would be a hundred, since it's not a hundred foot away from the property line, that's why they need the waiver. So if you want to go a hundred feet on either side of the pond or something to that effect, you could do that. It's really, you know, your choice and I guess a discussion with the applicant.
If I can interject, I had, maybe I misunderstood Dave, but I, I thought you were talking about a hundred feet north and south on Hausman as opposed to east from the pond out to Hausman.
I would just say one hundred feet within the, the wetlands.
Yeah, I don't know if this will inform the discussion or not, since Paul Suezak is on here. Paul, do you know offhand the direction of the flow of stormwater in the, in the report?
Most everything's going to flow south from here. I think the hundred feet from the wetlands pond is probably adequate for addressing everybody's concerns.
Okay. So Greg, what, what do you want us to, do you want us to vote on this or you want?
Well, the waiver request you should vote on. And basically you can state that if you're, if you so choose to waive the section based upon the approval of this, well, based upon the understanding the developer has the responsibility for five years to address road damage from the frost heaves. If you want to go one hundred feet, one hundred foot buffer around the wetlands, as Joe suggested. And I think that would be good. And then, once we get to the conditions of approval, we simply add that statement as the seventeenth condition of approval.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote on that, what you just said?
To waive, to addressing the waiver request.
Yes, to address, so there was a waiver for the, the chapter one ninety-six, twelve I, four E, requiring the infiltration areas to be one hundred feet from the property line with a maintenance review, operating review for five years of the area, a hundred feet around the, around the infiltration area. Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve that condition.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Brian.
Brian.
Motion by David, roll call.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay.
Mr. McNair, could I ask you a question of Greg? You said that, Greg, you said that was condition number seventeen. As I was taking notes, I thought we got to fifteen with a clean plan. What was sixteen?
Sixteen would be the note being placed on the plan defining the responsibilities of each new tenant.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Okay. The, the second waiver is from Sado, section three, twelve, thirty, six, C, five, A, requiring a maximum of forty feet wide driveway with the right of way, the right of way line. Waiver for that, for that requirement. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Brian, second from Alan. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. And the third is a Sado, section three, twelve dash thirty-five, B, three, A, four, requiring a waiver from requiring a concrete driveway apron. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
And that, that's.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's Alan and David.
Roll call, Brian, Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, and then a motion to, what's this, for the overall?
Yes.
Plan, how, can you word that for me?
A motion to recommend approval of the plan to the board of commissioners based on seventeen conditions. The two conditions not previously mentioned are sixteen, that a plan note be placed in the plan detailing the responsibilities of each new tenant to obtain zoning review and approval as required by the zoning ordinance. The language of the note subject to review and approval by the township solicitor's office. And item seventeen, which Joe has previously stated. And it starts with the developer has the responsibility for five years to address the road damage from frost heaves within a hundred feet of the wetlands basin. I kind of lost track after that. But it was basically that. So I will, I will pull the whole thing from the meeting recording.
Okay.
So seventeen conditions total.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second motion, motion Alan, second from Brian.
Okay, roll call vote, Brian Height.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. I think that takes care of everything.
Thank you.
Want to remind the applicant that should you not be able to get plans revised and deemed clean by the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one board of commissioner? Or prior to that, we would need a waiver from the time limitation to review the plan from you.
Understood.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, that was agenda item four. Agenda item five is the zoning ordinance amendment, no impact, low impact home-based business. Greg, do you want to go over that?
Sure. Let me read the background. With the ongoing pandemic creating shifts in business model, staff has noted an increase in requests for home-based businesses within township. The township's current ordinance section was last amended in two thousand and two to accommodate change to the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code, which permitted no-impact home-based businesses. Staff opined that it is not advisable to deviate from the regulations as stipulated in the MPC and proposed the, to amend the said section, that's the no-impact home-based businesses, to maintain greater consistency with the PAMPC. Staff then developed the following new regulations to permit home-based businesses that, while maintaining compatibility and appearance, compatibility with and appearance and impact of residential use in accordance with the intention of the no-impact home-based business regulations. These new regulations would permit a home-based business to exceed certain standards of the no-impact home-based business regulations provided only with zoning hearing board review and approval, and that would be a special exception review and approval. These new standards would account for businesses that may no longer comply with the proposed no-impact home-based business section, such as music teachers and the like. The proposed new section, low-impact home-based businesses, would allow public notice and comment on each proposed home-based business, would allow the zoning hearing board to review each proposed home-based business in context with the surrounding neighborhood, and would allow the zoning hearing board to impose additional conditions upon the home-based, home-based business as part of the approval process. So we're trying to increase a little flexibility, on one hand with low impact, while moving more toward the MPC's strict requirements for no-impact home-based businesses with this. So to review the first one, this is the no-impact, this is the changes we are required, require, recommending for no-impact home-based business. And what this would do is subsection one originally included to maintain municipal record of the no-impact home-based business within the township and to ensure that says, said businesses are in compliance with the MPC requirements. We're amending, we're recommending amendments to this only for clarity. This was, this section was not included in the PAMPC. This was just for the township to maintain record. Subsections two and four within the current ordinance were modified from the MPC's language when this was done back in two thousand and two. The MPC's language is the business shall employ no employees other than family members residing in the dwelling. Our section is different. And what it does, we, we opine that this allows for businesses who might have employees that are employed off-site only to fall under this so long as only family members are employed onsite in the dwelling. So that's why this was done. We're, we assume, I couldn't find any backing for that. So that's my assumption here. So what we will do is combine section, the current subsections two and four to more mirror the MPC and basically keep that section to allow home-based businesses which do have employees implied, employed off-site only to maintain the intent of the MPC language. So in the end, what we're doing is much more closely mirroring the no-impact home-based business section with that of the MPC. Now moving to the new section, this will be called home-based business low impact. And what this does is basically uses the intent of the no-impact, but to add a little more flexibility, all of which will be, all of which will require a special exception approval. And here, what we've done is, you can see the subsections on page eighty-one and eighty-two, subsections A through J, some of which are similar to what are in no-impact and some of which then expand upon that. So basically speaking, A is business-related activities shall be controlled by a resident of the property on which the activity takes place. B states that it's only permitted in a single detached dwelling unit and accessory, associated accessory structures. This was something that the planning commission mentioned at the last review, that they wanted it only for single families. So we included that. C, restating that the business activity shall have outward appearance of residential use and be compatible with the residential uses of the property and surrounding residential uses. D, I believe, D E. And F, mirror the no-impact. G is where we start to see changes. We will, this allows one non-resident employee to be permitted onsite at any one time. So that could be an administrative assistant who comes in for the day, or it could simply be an off-site person who comes in, picks up some equipment and leaves. H, this mirrors the no-impact, which allows only a twenty-five percent of the structure of the dwelling. This also adds twenty-five percent of the accessory structures such as sheds to be included in that. That's something that wasn't included in the no-impact. And that is a twenty-five percent of the gross total floor area of both the dwelling and the accessory structures. I.
Greg, I just interrupt. Does that include garage space?
Yes. Yes, if the garage is attached, that would be considered part of the dwelling unit. If it's a detached garage, that would be in the accessory structures.
Reason I ask is with selling real estate with realtors, garage space, basement space is excluded.
Yeah. So a, as part of a low-impact business, that would be included. So what you would see, there's possibly somebody who has a small landscaping business or something like that, that they are one person, they do their office work in their office or spare bedroom. And then any equipment storage would be within the garage and that would count toward the twenty-five percent. This also, I then goes into that as well, which allows the inventory equipment to be stored within the dwelling or within a garage or accessory structure while on the residential property. This does stipulate that all vehicles and trailers or other similar towable equipment utilized by the business shall be stored within the garage while on the residential property. The intent is that there aren't business labeled pieces of equipment that are visible to the public. Certainly, if somebody is using a pickup truck that they use as their personal business, or as a personal vehicle with no signage or anything like that, that's allowed to be parked in the driveway. But anything that's obviously marked with a business logo or something like that, that has to be stored in the garage to maintain a, an appearance of a residence. J, this merely stipulates for new applicants what we were looking to submit to the zoning hearing board as part of the special exception review. So this lists a number of items, not as limiting, but could include. And finally, number two, this basically states that any other uses that are defined in the zoning ordinance cannot be low-impact home-based businesses. So kennels or group, I'm sorry, daycare facilities which are defined in the zoning ordinance are not to be construed as low-impact home-based, home-based businesses. So those are the basic amendments that we're looking at. And obviously, we are looking to change the two sections. Right now, no-impact home-based business is three, fifty, forty-eight, and two. We would like the two sections to be grouped together. So that would be under home-based business, low-impact and home-based business, no-impact. They would be changed to three, fifty, forty-eight, H, with home-based business, low-impact being four, and home-based business, no-impact being five. And of course, then we would have to renumber the sections that would be impacted by those changes. So that is what we're proposing with this. Any comments, questions, suggestions? Any comments, questions, suggestions?
As far as I'm concerned, I I think it's it's well put together, uh, I'm okay with it now. It's basically splitting it up so that either no impact and you can do uh the uh, that would not need a zoning uh hearing where the other one would, is that, I think I have that correct, and the the low impact would require
Special exception approval.
Special exception.
Yes. Yeah, so if if you're no impact, that all that requires is a zoning permit, which is fifty dollars. Um, if you're, if you're going for a low impact, that would be a special exception, so that I believe for residential is currently three hundred and fifty dollars.
And the the no impact, that does not generate any uh traffic or parking requirements?
No impact uh does not. That is very stringent and the state has basically stated that um, it is to look and feel like a residential use and therefore with no clients coming in or no employees coming in, there should be no additional parking requirements.
Okay.
There's probably a lot of that going on right now that we're not aware of.
Yes.
I don't know, you know, this work from home culture. My wife was told she's never going back to the office, so it's but she's not, doesn't have clients or, you know, anything, it's just working on a computer, so. But I could see other aspects of this are already occurring, it it legitimizes, and I want to thank the staff for capturing our discussion at the last couple of meetings about this, so you did a really good job of consolidating our scattered thoughts, so I appreciate that, Greg.
Oh, my pleasure.
Any other comments? Al, you okay with this?
I'm okay with it, I, my uh initial concern was what the added fees might be for somebody to go with the zoning hearing. And and of course, I guess on top of the township fees, you'd have an attorney's fee as well.
If if they so chose. They they might not have to, a lot of residential don't bring in attorneys.
Okay, I, I don't know that, but I I just wonder that.
Yeah.
I I also think as we migrate away from and I think we're gonna migrate away from the intense COVID restrictions, uh, some people may well go back to the office. So I think may maybe this, maybe the use of this will have peaked and will start to go downhill a little bit. But the outside of that, I'm happy with it. So thank you for doing a nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al, how about, how about you, David, any?
Um, no additional comments, it looks like they took into account uh last month's input.
Okay.
I have one question that I'd like or comment that I'd like to bring up in regards to the new section of the low impact. Greg, I know we went over this. Um, and this might be one that we've been over, uh, on the last page, six of six at the bottom, it is letter H. The business activity shall be conducted only within the dwelling and the associated accessory structure. It should probably be either or, um, and the twenty five percent of the total gross floor area of the dwelling and the associated accessory structure. Um, I think they kind of need to be usually they're gonna be using either or, so are you, and I know we went over this, I apologize. Are we saying that if we have an accessory detached garage, we are going to utilize their home plus the accessory structure and say it's twenty five percent of that total, giving them actually more because the accessory structure may only be a shed. So that would give them the ability to use the entire shed if you're incorporating the square footage of the home. It, I I think it should be twenty five percent of either or.
Oh, well, actually, yeah, we we did discuss this. And uh, you know, I I believe there will be cases in which, as as I had mentioned in the example, uh, if somebody has, um, you know, a small landscaping firm, um, they will utilize probably a spare room or their kitchen table um to do their office work, but store equipment in their shed, detached garage, or even in their garage. Um, so rather than go to an either or, in which case, you know, if somebody has, say, a ten by ten shed out back, um, you know, to to determine that they can only use twenty five square feet of the shed, um, might be getting a little in 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 detail into the weeds for that. Um, I mean, with a no impact home based business, they can use twenty five percent of their their dwelling unit. So if they're using both, or even if they're using just one, for example, detached garage, um, if you have a two car detached garage and you're storing your your work truck in it, um, if you go by that approach, you probably don't have the room to store your truck in the garage, because twenty five percent of a two car garage may not accommodate the truck. Whereas if you accommodate the how the dwelling and the garage, you do have that room available. It's still twenty five percent of the total gross floor area, um, but you know, we're we're trying to limit it to that and that alone. So I I think rather than go into serious detail, I think it's just easier to um go with the twenty five percent of the total gross floor area and leave it at that.
Of both buildings?
Of both buildings, yes.
Okay, all right, so I mean, basically, in my mind, what I'm gathering is that's just giving them extra square footage to play with. Because if they have the, any uh vehicles, they have to be housed.
Yes.
So regardless, if you, if if the twenty five percent from the combined structures on the property, and if they have four structures, that means they can utilize all of those structures for the square footage, but only be using one structure to put this uh, low impact home based business in. And so if they don't have enough, I'm I'm looking at it as housing vehicles. Um, because either way, I'm looking at, I'm trying to foresee variances that are coming.
So I think part of the issue might be the, the first and that maybe could be and or.
That's what I was thinking, but.
Yeah, that's kind of what you were talking about when we, when you first mentioned it, and then the and for the total square footage. Because they may only occupy an accessory structure for their business. So it gives the and or.
Okay, yeah, that's easy.
So where, is this in H?
In H, yes.
Yeah.
At the, at the end of the first line.
Yes, so business activities shall be conducted only within the dwelling and or associated accessory structures.
So it's clear that you you don't have to conduct the business in both.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But that's total square footage.
Yes, that that's a total square footage of both.
Got you, because I'm like, Greg, you're aware of my garage out front, that's bigger than my house.
Yes.
So I I'm trying to like, not that I'm doing any of this, because and I'm just rolling that scenario out with
We'll have to check on service.
Out there, you know, so.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Did that get to what you were asking for, Laura?
Um, I'm still processing, I'm sorry, um. Uh, Greg, can you, can you go back to an analogy and give me an example? Do you remember, I'm I'm looking at my notes and I'm not finding uh, I'm not finding anything with that one that we marked up, but I know we discussed it.
Um, yeah, that that was one of the first things that I changed, and we really didn't have much in the way of comment toward it, so that's, that's why you probably have nothing in your notes.
All right, so so maybe it's just the uh, as Dave stated in the beginning, where the first and the business activity shall be conducted only within the dwelling and or associated accessory structure. It may not occupy more than twenty five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling and the associated, so we.
Did, would it be helpful to put a plus instead of and? So that they, they can combine.
But I just want to make sure that that's what we want to do, because in essence, if they, if they choose to use an accessory structure and they're allowed to comprise the twenty five percent from the single family dwelling and the structure, it's gonna give them a larger business area in a residential neighborhood. I know it's going to the zoning hearing board. Uh, so all the neighbors get notified and that's a plus, you know, that helps, I just want to make sure that is the intent of what we want to do here, or do we just want to say twenty five percent of the structures that they're going to use, which, which is kind of what I'm leaning to.
So I ju- I just, I just, uh, the devil's advocate popped in here. So somebody could, if they have a big garage, just like Brian, Brian has a big, a garage bigger than his house. And if he counts that as square footage to be used for his business, he could, depending how much bigger the garage is, he could end up using his whole house as business.
Correct.
Correct. However, that's gonna be rare because um we do have a proportionality, or we've been enforcing a proportionality clause, so we generally don't see garages larger than the house. Now Brian's, of course, has been around forever, so it predates zoning. Um, but for the most part, we, we don't have stuff like that.
We, right, but no, I'm just, I'm I'm, I'm just, I'm having, oh.
I think, I think I know where you're coming from, Laura, because what we don't want to happen is somebody use their whole house.
Correct, this is a residential neighborhood and it's just a little, little
If they have a barn on their property and they count that square footage, they could end up using their entire house.
Correct, you want to compromise to allow the hair salon, the tax collector, you know, that's seasonal, people come in your hair salon, you know, you never have more than one at a time unless they have one other person. You know, there's, when someone wants to go that large in a residential neighborhood, and you will have it. Um, it it is, it is, there's a place for that, that's in the general commercial area, in the highway commercial area.
Well.
Like, can we put in language that says you have to use accessory structure? If you're gonna count accessory structure square footage, you have to be using accessory structure square footage.
I I think it should, yeah, I think the and should be removed, I think it's twenty five percent, I think, my recommendation would be that it should be twenty five percent of the structure that you're proposing it in, whether it's your house or an accessory structure. If they exceed that, no difference than the non-conforming section, you ask for the variance to exceed that twenty five percent at the zoning hearing board while they're there to get the special exception, and that's how this plays out, I think.
But could it, could I play devil's advocate to your devil's advocate?
That's what, that's what I'm doing. That's my job.
Well, first off, um, if you have a garage and a detached garage that is the size of your house in square footage, that means you can use half of your house. If you have half of your house or more devoted to the business, at some point, it no longer is a residential use.
Right, but we shouldn't have to think that hard to do that, it shouldn't be that difficult.
But that's my point, it isn't that difficult. If if they go to the zoning hearing board, they have to present evidence of what they're using. So I I don't believe you will ever see somebody coming in and saying, I have a garage that is three times the size of my house, therefore my house will be a business, well, at that point, the house is the primary use, which is residential. If you do that, it is no longer a residential use, the garage is no longer an accessory to a residential use, so.
Well, right, now you're running to creating non-conformities and you're running into code enforcement and.
Now, how so, what, what I'm saying, Laura, is it can't be approved.
So I I think we need to be more explicit in the language, and perhaps it's up to twenty five percent of the primary residence and up to seventy five percent of an accessory structure.
No, absolutely not, this is a residential neighborhood, I think, I feel it should be twenty five percent.
If you have a garage and you're parking a truck and a trailer in there, in a two car garage.
That's in section I, where if you're gonna have vehicles, you need to have a garage. This is just a few, if you have, if you are proposing hair salon in your home.
Not, not to cut this off, but could, could I suggest that we take this back and discuss this offline?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Almost there.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, everyone.
I'm I'm sorry to be.
No, that's all right, I think it's good, are there, just so while we're here, are there any other comments from anybody?
No, I I think that's a really good idea, because the last thing we want to do is do something and then have to redo it again.
Right, right, and it's my thing, it's a residential neighborhood, this is not commercial, this is residential, it needs to maintain a residential. These are, these are homes, these are not businesses, these are homes.
Exactly, and and I I believe this intent does that. So we we will discuss that offline, and then we can go through as number, as many examples as you want, so we can hash this out.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think it should just be either structure, not both. If you're proposing it in the garage, you get twenty five percent if you're a accessory structure, if you're proposing it in the house, you get twenty five percent. That's all you need, if it's anything more, you ask the zoning hearing board for relief.
And I I think that's the key right there, Laura, it's, it's at the discretion of the zoning hearing board.
Yeah.
And variances at that time.
Yeah, and Yeah, my, my problem with the variances is that it would have to meet criteria, you know, standards, and I the zoning hearing board will simply say no.
No, they won't, no, there, there have been some that meet that, and and uh, yeah, this, it's, that's not out of the ordinary. It's very common practice in other municipalities where it's limited to twenty five percent, same as the non-conforming structures, and it is understandable, depending on what they propose, um, there are, they go through. Uh, but they have to prove that there is still that no impact to the residents.
Okay, so we'll take this uh take this uh home and uh review it in our home based business and uh I'll come back next, next month with it, it was a good, good conversation, I I think that's great to get those things uh worked out, but I don't think we're gonna be able to. Okay, um, we don't have to do any action on that, do we?
No.
No.
Okay, um, moving right along then, uh, so that was agenda item five. Uh, agenda item six is a transportation infrastructure update.
Yes, um, one thing that did come across uh our desk, township's desk, is that uh there was a plan submitted from Turnpike for the bridge over Huckleberry Road, so um, as you know, uh, the Turnpike is moving forward with the next phases, I believe, of the extension of the Turnpike, I think they're in Quakertown now. Next five to ten years, I'm thinking about till they get up to Lehigh County interchange, but they're planning ahead, so just uh as you know, it's common, the bridges go, bridges and uh underpasses, overpasses go first, so uh they'll be, they'll be moving into the area soon and uh the Turnpike will be three lanes to Lehigh Valley. If I might chime in, they're also skipping the bridge at twenty two in Turnpike going to Huckleberry, because that's a low hanging fruit compared to the interchange. Yeah, awesome, one thing I also wanted to mention, if 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 any of yous noticed construction on the shoulder of three oh nine, just south of Ridgeview, uh, that is an I T S sign and intelligent transportation system.
system sign to give, uh, those variable message boards, uh, that's going to be installed there. So that's what that is. They were running wires and stuff, so I was out there for my other job, so. Just because I had somebody else ask me, so I figured somebody else might be interested.
Okay, thanks. Anything else Tony?
Uh, no, not this time.
All right. Thank you, um. I guess we can talk about comprehensive plan update anymore. We did talk about some.
Yeah, I guess just to piggyback on what we talked about earlier is after the working groups are done and the workbooks are filled out. Though the idea is each working group will have a finalized workbook. Those workbooks then get transferred over to the planning commission and the planning commission uses these workbooks to put together the comprehensive plan. There may be some conflicting recommendations, um, and that would be for the, the planning commission to kind of work through any of those conflicts um, in workshops moving forward during that phase. Um, one of the other things we kind of talked about since we were on the topic of modelers is once that comprehensive plan is finished, um, or a draft of it or a final draft, we can plug that back into the models and kind of see what changes there were. Is one of the other things that we're thinking about doing. Just to kind of side note, Greg and I were talking about planning in general and things to kind of prioritize in, in the comprehensive plan and I think Greg came up with the idea of planning for impacts. Um, so looking at what these fiscal impacts are going to be, what these traffic impacts are going to be, plan for those to make sense where the infrastructure can handle it or make recommendations how to rectify any of those impact, potential impacts. Um, so I think that's kind of a focus that internally we're, we're looking at. Um, and you know, looking forward to getting to that piece where we start putting everything together, um, which, which will be kind of the, the fun part of getting the comprehensive plan together. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks. So, and that'll be, that's what we'll be doing over the, a- after we get the, um, these phase four meetings. Uh, we'll be done by June 30th, be working on the sections of the book in July and putting it together in August and developing maps and stuff, which could take another bit of time and then re-review economic and traffic.
Yep. In general, the maps will be parts of, part of the workbooks.
Okay.
So like, for the resource protection one, we'll have all the resource protection maps, um, relevant to the, each of the working groups. Um, so the idea is that, you know, it's an easy transition between the working group into the final comp plan. The big mapping exercise for that, the planning commission piece is coming up with that future land use plan. And, you know, based on the hexes and what comes out of recommendations, there, there's, and using GIS, we can um, overlay and kind of punch out pieces that are protected and then you slowly end up with your future land use plan, um, going that way. Um, and that'll be kind of a fun exercise to go through and kind of see what happens when we protect steep slopes and, you know, how much of the land area does that impact? Um, so that's one of the things that I, you know, I'm kind of envisioning for these work, for the planning commission workshops, um, kind of going through some of those different scenarios.
Okay. Um, and so we'll be working over the second half of the, this year, getting it through to some kind of, you know, with the maps and all, uh, getting to a document uh, to review with the border commissioners, I would say somewhere to get a final draft later, late this year.
I hope it doesn't take that long, but, um, it could, yes.
And after that, there is advertising, uh, and then a review by the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission and neighboring, neighboring, uh, communities, um, and then, then public, uh, South Whitehall Township resident review and then incorporating comments and then publishing. Will, will come after, after that. Anybody have any questions? And so that's the, the general schedule. It's going to take, you know, some some portion of the second half, in, into the second half of this year. Uh, and then, then there will be, and, and that doesn't, uh, go, you know, the advertising and, and, and comments and things, there's stuff that we don't control all because there's, it's going to outside reviews.
Correct.
Okay. Any, any questions on that, the timing? Okay. Anything else, um, with the, uh?
The, the only other thing, the, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, North Whitehall is where we were a year ago. They, they're just starting their comp plan update, so.
Okay.
Well, I hope we finish ours before they do.
All right.
That would be a plus.
Well, that just means we put more care into it.
Yes. And we had a pandemic.
Okay. Making things up now, huh? All right. We will move on to agenda item eight. Uh, courtesy of the floor. Um, there is, there's one question from.
Lee sold.
Okay, there was one Scott Collins. I don't know if you wanted to.
Oh, I addressed that already.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioner McMaire, why don't, why don't you ask, a- answer Adam's question first before my comments?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is Adam Whalen with K W Engineers, uh, representing Lehigh County for this Cedar Brook skilled nursing additions project. Um, couple of months ago, we came before the planning commission and discussed, um, um, the driveway improvements for the proposed project. And, um, as a, you know, for kind of a cursory review, we wanted to come before you to show you what the new plan, uh, looks like based on, uh, discussions with the township engineer and the discussions we had at the previous planning commission meeting. So I don't know, Greg, you pull up the site plan for us so that, uh, everybody can see.
I think Tony's on that.
Okay.
Should be there.
Yeah, so previously, um, we had, um, a four-way intersection. Well, in existing condition, it's a five-way intersection. Then we had a four-way, um, we discussed it and, you know, came to the conclusion that, you know, based on the comprehensive plan, you know, you're going to be potentially smoothing out that curve and you wanted one curve cut coming to the site. Um, while we still wanted to keep that restricted right out driveway, uh, we bent it down a little bit more to get it, uh, more site distance. Um, and speaking with the township engineer, um, it was discussed that, you know, potentially there could be a car sitting right there at the intersection, making a left-hand turn into Cedar Brook. Um, so the site distance would have to come from a car traveling, uh, plan west down Cedar Brook around that turn. Um, Tony had, you know, talked with me about it and he said that he was able to drive that intersection around 20 to 25 miles per hour. So we based our site this, the site distance off of a minimum of 151 required by Pennant, uh, for the slope of the roadway and the speed that you're able to take that turn. Um, and we have about 182 feet available, um, from that right out restricted driveway. And then also it was discussed too about the, um, waiver request we had for the, the sidewalk. Because it's such a large parcel that, you know, we're not doing a whole lot of frontage improvements. Uh, but we are, you know, doing new curbing between the two proposed driveways and sidewalk along the, uh, the top of the driveway up there, uh, planned door. For any kind of future improvements that might happen to plan east or plan south. So I just wanted to bring this to, to the, to the planning commission to kind of just get your feel for it, you know, see if it's pretty much what we had discussed and, um, just kind of get your, your comments on it. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the planning commission?
As far as the state distance, I would heard, uh, Tony, if he feels the, the site, if he feels the site distance is adequate.
Um, so, uh, this is, as Adam said, this 150 feet is required, is based upon a 25 mile per hour. They have 182. These are 30 mile per hour roads, um, which will require 204 feet. Now, 30 mile per hour does not take into van, uh, take into the fact that there is a curve ahead sign that I think, I, I believe is 10 or 15 mile per hour as you approach this curve. Since it's a non-stop control, there is an advanced warning sign. It's not a speed limit, but it's an advanced warning. Now to the other aspect, I'm going to go to an aerial. I hope, I hope you don't mind. I like, uh, looking at something like this. So as we said, cars could sit, since this is a stop-controlled intersection right here, a car could at the worst case sit right here in this existing, um, spot, either going into the site or just waiting. So what we did is we said, look, you can't, you can't come across, you can't account for seeing cars coming down the hill, if you will, towards Cedar Brook. So the worst case scenario is that is a car sitting there. He has about 25 mile per hour site distance available. If there's not a car there, um, 200 feet as required gets you to about, right about this edge, right where the edge of the, um, improvements are. So again, we, we always look at the worst case, what, what's, what could happen? What could the problems be? Um, I, like Adam said, I went out there, I did about three or four laps. Um, now, I don't have a sports car, I didn't try and push it. What I did is I drove normally. I was about 20 miles per hour coming around this turn that I felt safe and comfortable in my older SUV. So, um, again, it's it, it feels like they are increasing, uh, the site distance. Uh, the, the waiver itself requires 300 feet. I don't think they're ever going to get 300 feet. I believe this, uh, distance is about 180 feet from this intersection. Um, what they did do is they did clean up the intersection for us. As you know, the, the five went to three. This, uh, this one driveway to their site does, uh, create a lot less confusion and it allows for a stopped car to see both ways. Um, so the board, board still is an option if they like the second out or not. Now, the only thing I'll say is, um, I, I will not speak for the Public Safety Commission, but in the past, there are mentions that they like a second access to a site, especially a site that houses or has the amount of people that Cedar Brook would have. Uh, they might, they might say, I like to hear what they say, but they might say that the second access is good because if for some reason there is a blockage here, I'm sure an ambulance can get up here. Um, even though it's marked as it is, if an ambulance comes with sirens, I believe that it would have the opportunity to get into the site if there is a problem at this intersection. So all these things are something that I would request that the planning commission take, uh, take in their thoughts and, uh, you know, make, give you the best, give the best decision possible.
And, and if I may, I believe the Public Safety Commission saw the earlier iteration with a two-legged driveway and they had no comments to that. And, and that was with a two-legged driveway and a closer space between the two driveways proposed.
About here, I remember.
Okay.
Uh, I'd just like to say thank you, Tony and Greg. Um, thank you, planning mission members for listening in. Um, you know, obviously we're not looking for any kind of action tonight. We're going to be resubmitting our land development, uh, resubmission, um, next month, be on the July agenda, but you know, that's why we just wanted to come to you today so that, you know, to try to get a sense of comfort, I guess, with our plans so that, you know, the, the, the comments that we have received to date, they resolve. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on. Lee Salt.
Yeah, real quick, Adam, are you still on the call?
Yeah.
Hey, well, can you, Tony, can you scroll down a little bit to the other building?
I sure can.
Thank you. Uh, and Tony, you said something about public safety wants, you know, maybe other access. Couldn't, I, I mentioned at the last meeting, we talked about this. Is there a way that you can connect the, the parking lots at the backside of the buildings? So there would be another way to get in there if they had to? If you look at what new parking lot is, um, towards the back of the property line, at the bottom where the existing apartments are that aren't going to get done. Tony, to the left.
Actually, Lee, uh, maybe this would help you, Lee, if you, if you want mine, maybe this would give you some kind of.
Okay, so if you look at the existing building that's there that, to the, to the, I guess the right there, where Tony has his cursor. There's, there's the, to the, to the right of that, there's the access that comes off of, off the road there and then goes back behind the buildings. Is there a way to tie in that? Exactly, right there, Tony. Is there a way to tie in there that you could have another access into the facility from a different entrance instead of the two that are in the front?
Um, I, I mean, I, I would say there's a way. Um, but I believe that, um, you know, it can always be, we prove the, uh, for my client, but that I don't, if he wants to.
This is where I will speak to that comment. We discounted that, that option clearly because of the differentiation between Cedar View, Cedar Village Apartments and Cedar Brook skilled nursing. Therefore, it is not in our best interest to make those parking lots combined. It's confusing for our seniors who have vehicles and live in those apartments. Uh, and if we add more traffic, it would become, uh, we believe a, a public safety issue, uh, working through with the residents of those two apartment complexes.
Okay, I just thought, because Tony's mentioned for public safety, another access in, that might be a way to get access in.
If you're, Lee, if you're talking about, can we create some kind of emergency only access in addition? Uh, certainly that's something that, uh, you know, I'd consider. Uh, however, as part of normal traffic planning, we'd like to keep those two enterprises separate. Uh, however, uh, anything's possible in terms of us evaluating the site for better control for public safety. You know, I, I work with the, uh, the emergency teams at, at, at the county through, um, through the different townships, municipalities, boroughs, cities. And certainly we're always looking for opportunities to make it safer. But at this time, from, from the standard transportation plan, we like to keep those entities separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. All right, uh, a- any more discussion on this? Uh, that, that give you what you needed, Adam?
Yeah, that, that is it. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any additional?
Commissioner McMaire, I did have a couple of things if I, if I could. I don't want to take much time, but I do have a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, go back to Laura and Dave's. Um, go back to Laura and Dave's comments and about the, um. The home-based businesses. Is there? Laura touched base on the, on the notification for the zoning, which is, which I figured that. Um, but. And, and you guys got to the, to the crazy scenarios that I was thinking in my head with. If you had a family working there and one person and you have a six, a four-car garage and you did all those kinds of things. My mind kind of went that way. Um, but, um, is there going to be a limit, a number of employees in a home-based business?
Um, with a note, with a low-impact home-based business, there is a maximum of one. Uh, one off-site.
But what about if I have three, three kids that I have a landscape business and I've got myself and my three kids and my wife does the books. I have somebody else come in and I have a five-car garage.
Yes, and all the residents of the dwelling unit. Um, are eligible to be employees, but only one off-site employee, um, is permitted.
Okay.
One coming in from off-site.
However. The low impact takes all requests to the zoning hearing board. They have the right to ask for additional.
Yes.
Anything that, that we discussed in the low impact. When you're going through an applicant, when they come in, if they cannot meet any of that criteria. It automatically is going to probably be a variance in addition. To the special exception that automatically throws them there. So a special exception is a use that is permitted by right. And it allows the zoning hearing board to place conditions. So as long as they show. Or explain to the board their reasoning for going above and beyond the criteria that we lay out. Um, they, they have the right to, to ask that of the board.
Okay. Then that leads to my next question is, if in. In the time span that after they get approved and they go through that, what is going to be enforcement on that?
It would follow the, the path just like it would any residential home. The primary use is a residential home. A single-family dwelling or a twin, whatever type of dwelling they reside in. Enforcement, um, it's kind of broad when you ask that question, but the, the best I can say is to use yourself as an analogy. You live in a residential home, if you're doing something and a neighbor complains, they're either going to reach out to the township. Or they're going to call the police. So in the case of a, of a home-based business. Um, at the time of inception, when it, when the application comes in. The neighbors are notified, all adjoining property owners within a three-hundred-foot radius now are notified. It gives everyone, whether they are an objector or a person of interest. Um, they are allowed to come and hear, and they can ask questions at that time as well. So most of the time, things get resolved during the hearing, which is why it's important. To have this low impact as, as that it goes before the zoning hearing board. So that you don't have enforcement issues after. You're, you're, you're really trying to avoid that. By creating the criteria that Greg is laying out here.
And if I could just jump in the, with regards to enforcement. One of the things that's really good about having it go to the zoning hearing board is if there are any conditions. They're explicitly written out and it gives the code enforcement officer. Something to look at and say, you're either in compliance with that condition or you're not in compliance. It kind of takes away some of that gray area. Which is why that zoning hearing board is such a. Good way to handle this.
Yeah, not, not only conditions, but as part of the testimony, the, the applicant must submit evidence of certain things, so. Um, there may be no additional conditions, but anything they submit as part of the conditional, uh, the special exception. Uh, will be into the record. So if they exceed something that they have submitted it as evidence. Then that, that can be grounds for termination of the, uh, you know, or some sort of enforcement action.
Even better.
Yep, even better.
All right, thank you. Dave, I have a question for you about modeling, if I can.
Yep.
And I'll ask you more offline, but, um, if I can call you sometime. But does, it, does the modeling include? Potential or future income and also stress on our. Um, emergency services, public works. Uh, those types of things also?
Yes. Um. It may not be into the, they look at capacity is generally how they, how they do it. So if there's a need for additional. If whatever the buildout is and there's a need for additional capacity. That gets factored into the model. Um. What I don't think is in this model, but some models do, do is. Um, they look at the maintenance costs and the, the maintenance that's associated with. Um. Roads and upkeep of infrastructure, which I think gets put in, but it's not in a whole lot of detail. Um, you know, and. I'm not the modeling expert, but you know, that's kind of my understanding of it. Um, and Todd, when he, when he goes over the model, he will certainly explain in more detail.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
One last question, Tony. You had talked in the beginning of the meeting about they were, they were expanding the radius of the, of the truck radius. Uh, for the right turns out of the, the facility. And I, I noticed a lot that there's trucks making right-hand turns out of facilities. Evitably go over into the next to the oncoming lane because there's not the radius there. Isn't, wouldn't it make sense for, I don't know if we can do it as a township or if it's a state law or what, or if it's a national law. But to make the radius required that a tractor-trailer doesn't have to go into the next lane. In order to make a right-hand turn?
Um, that makes great sense, Lee. I know that the ordinance has specific requirements for reasons, um. I guess, um, I'm trying to think of a good example of reasons why they don't allow an extraordinary length of a driveway. Um, I'm thinking of. Geez, in this township, you know, a strip center, imagine a strip center that's off the road and it just has head-in parking. And it has two hundred feet, say, of just open pavement right off a road with head-in parking spots. That's really frowned upon because you have a lot of people trying to back out, come in from the road. So that's why there's a specific criteria for, uh. A driveway width and a driveway to get you to a parking lot. Now. That being said, um. Everything that you say in terms of turning movements is correct. No one wants a truck to get into the extra lane. So every time we review a plan. We always ask, we always make sure that the fire, you know, fire apparatus can get in and out of the site all throughout the driveways. And we also do check to make sure that trucks can make the turn out and stay in their lane now, um. I can't tell you that every truck driver knows the exact right way to, you know, the turning movement to make that turn. So there, there is some error there and I, you know, we, but we like to, we look and see and we don't make. We, we make sure they don't meet it by an inch. We do make sure that there is some gap, but at the same time. We check to see to make sure that each truck can turn into its correct lane without, uh, entering into opposing traffic.
Yeah, the one, one of the things I think about is, you know, I look right here off, off of Winchester and I always. See tractor-trailers trying to back into the Weiss. Uh, loading dock, which is right off of Winchester. And that, that driveway for them to get in and out of there is not very wide. They're always blocking the road and trying to get in and out. And when they come out of there, they're, if, you know, if they're trying to get in there, it's just, they can't, they can't do it. Um, and that's, that's an issue for, for that, but I, I see other places also where I just, where I see, you know, truck trailer drivers, they can't. They physically can't make the turn because it's basically a right angle getting out of a. Out of the facility, they can't, they've, they've got to go over into the, into the left-hand turn lane, so.
No, you're, you're a hundred percent correct and, uh, you know, obviously I can't speak for what happened, but we do, we have been looking for that. And that's why actually you probably notice at these meetings, there's been a lot of waivers for driveway, where I said, at the right-of-way line for specific. Circumstances like this.
Right, okay. Hey, thank you very much for your time.
Excellent.
Do we have any, any other comments or? Any other entries?
Courtesy of the floor?
Right.
Uh, does anyone wish to discuss? Hi Cube?
No. No comment, I should say. I have a presentation next week on that, so. This is when my worlds collide.
I did send you out a, a fair bit of information, um, certainly for your own edification. Um, if you have any questions.
Do we handle that by our height of structures, like the special height limitation? I didn't look at your, I'll be honest, I didn't look at this stuff because this is. I'll give you my information and you'd understand. But isn't that handled like in the IC one zone, like our special height limitation is seventy feet, I believe?
Seventy, correct, yes. Yeah, the, the IC one zone is the only zone that permits, um, warehousing and distribution at this point. So, um, that, that, that zone is capped at seventy feet, um, been that way for a long time. Uh, we do, we have recently updated twice the warehousing and distribution use schedule. Uh, to add quite a number of, uh, additional items to it. Uh, for, first and foremost is it's now a conditional use, which it wasn't three or four years ago. Well. I should say, wow, five years ago now. So that does give us a lot of, a lot more, um, pull to deal with, uh. The different varieties.
So that, that, the height is a condition?
No, the height, the height is a standard within the IC one zone.
Okay.
So.
If they wanted to. What would they have to do?
That's a variance.
That's how Opera McConji got into her pickle.
Yes.
Yeah, where the township had to sue the, or appeal the decision. And, and, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I know here that the zoning here, uh, the, the Board of Commissioners is briefed on all the zoning appeals. And in certain cases, they will instruct the township to send representation. Um, so I, I would imagine in something like this. Yes, we would probably tap Mr. Zader's organization to, um, represent the township's interest at the zoning hearing board. So. So there we are, um, so.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so there's a number of things. I, I, I think we have a fairly sturdy ordinance with regard to warehouses. Obviously, we can always improve that and certainly through the cop plan process. Uh, and the follow-up zoning update, we would, we will be looking at doing that. Um, the fact of the matter is that it is only IC one zone and the number of available properties are getting smaller and smaller. With every project there, so, um. Could we see one tomorrow? Yes. Um, likelihood? I wouldn't hold my breath. So.
Okay.
The, the ones I've seen in the Lea Valley, they want more acreage than we have capacity for. They, they want to do, usually it's a, a standard warehouse and a high structure associated with it for. Usually it's cold storage because things are. Easy to cool when they go up, so it, it's, it's, it's. I don't foresee us having a structure that big, but stranger things have happened, but you know, I, I. Just the ones I've looked at in other municipalities that have come even in the sketch. It, I don't think we would get to that stage, but. And we won't even talk about going underground.
I take it that's becoming less.
What's that?
I said you piqued my curiosity and I heard Greg say, I heard Greg say prohibited.
No, no, I, I'm saying that's becoming less cost prohibitive than it used to be.
Oh, gotcha.
But that, that opens up a whole environmental, yeah, it's. There was one proposed and they quickly ran away from Pennsylvania due to the karst geology.
Yeah.
I would just add, while I agree with what Greg said. In terms of the ordinance being pretty solid right now with the seventy-foot height limitation. Putting on my developer's hat, there are arguments that can be made and as the pressure increases. For more and more warehouse space and we're at the epicenter of it in the country right now here in the Lea Valley. Uh, the pressure will mount, the creativity will increase, the legal arguments and, uh. Lawsuits will increase, so I think looking at it right now, in order to protect the interests of the township makes a lot of sense.
Meaning Joe, keep it the way it is that we are protected.
I think there are some things that we could look at that might improve the circumstance.
Yeah, did, do we open up ourselves with, uh, you know, a developer saying, oh, you don't have. Um. High cube warehouse, therefore we propose X, Y, Z because we have a height limit of seventy. And then they say we're not providing high cube use in our.
The standard definition of a high cube warehouse is. Thirty-five feet or above, so I think thirty-five and seventy, we're capturing that.
Correct, and I would think that, uh, according to the MPC, we are allowing for the use, so. At, at seventy feet, we are okay. Anything above and beyond would go through zoning hearing board.
But I think as Joe mentioned, you can argue. Anything.
Of course they can argue, that's what attorneys do.
We did that on home-based businesses.
Move back a few decades ago on behalf of a developer. I took the position that under the township ordinance, it was fatally flawed. Because it failed to provide for what I referred to as a limited service motel, which was a motel that did not have a restaurant. The ordinance provided for hotels, it provided for motels, but I argued it was a different use. So what I was alluding to and where I think we might be able to do something to deal with this issue. I could see a developer, as this pressure mounts, taking the position that a high. Five feet is a much different animal than a twelve-story high cube warehouse and we do not provide for that. And therefore the ordinance is fatally flawed and end up taking that through the court system. So I think that's the animal that needs to be addressed. That's the bear in the room.
Throw his way until other case law prevails and keep ours the way it is and we end up turning out. If someone comes in and it goes to zoning hearing board, it's all gonna. That's where all the case law is going to prevail then and precedent will be set. But if it's already in, um, upper MAC, lower MAC, wherever it is, there's already. Stuff in the area. That, um. Kind of addresses it, so maybe those townships could be looked at to see. How they addressed it. Rather than, uh. Uh, amending our ordinance. I, I just don't see a need to amend our ordinance at this time.
The upper MAC situation doesn't address the scenario that I just raised. That was just simply a straight height variance issue. What I'm talking about is something different. It's categorization of use.
So, okay, I was just going to say, so. In our ordinance, do we categorize other uses? Um, because we do allow for the warehouse use. I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Dave taught me that, um. Um, we, we do allow for the use, according to the MPC, we are allowing for the warehouse use. But as you, the word Joe categorize.
Just as the municipality that I talked about twenty-five years ago provided for the motel. Just as the municipality that I talked about twenty-five years ago provided for the motel use. But I was successful in convincing the courts for that motel developer that it did not provide for a limited service motel, it was exclusionary zoning. And what I'm talking about here is trying to posture South Whitehall in such a way that a developer cannot come in and say that, well, we provide for warehouses. We even provide for what one might nominally refer to under the ITE as a high cube. We really don't provide for true modern day high cube warehouses at twelve stories.
Yeah.
Is a different use.
Yeah, it's an emergency.
So we have a choice of keeping it the way it is and waiting till someone comes in possibly taking it to the courts or changing it and allowing, opening it up for people to say, hey, they offer that.
I, I guess I have nothing further to say except that Brian's working on it. I participated in the LVPC seminar about a month or two months ago. Uh, the PSATS magazine featured an article on high cube warehouses in which Becky Bradley and Kathy Rader from Upper Mac County were really featured. We are at the epicenter of this issue in Pennsylvania. And so I think the LVPC is starting to think about it.
Yeah, I, I think it, it's good that we're starting to have this conversation, especially with our, our comp plan being worked on and um, I, I personally generally like to be proactive opposed to reactive. I, I think this is good that we're having the conversation.
Somebody will propose this in our municipality. These structures, not necessarily high cube over seventy feet are being put in locations that you would be mind boggling. There's various municipalities that are miles and miles from high arterial roads where they're being proposed. So, and we're close to seventy-eight, the turnpike, so somebody's gonna. They go on an aerial view and they're like, ooh, there's a big vacant lot right across from eighty-four lumber, what can we do there?
Yep.
And I'm surprised it hasn't gotten there yet, eventually it will when the Warren sewer goes in. So that's probably our last big chunk, I would think, Greg.
Yes, yeah, that's the last big un.
Virgin land.
Yeah, untroubled site, we do have several sites that are as big, but they have wetland issues. They have floodplain issues, that, that one is neither, that is ready to go. So, yeah.
Maybe I see one.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, I, I have, I have no issues with, you know, getting together, uh, meeting with council, discussing our current situation and seeking some recommendations to improve it. You know.
If you want to invite me in, if you want to have an internal discussion and want to invite me in, that's fine because I have too many years of experience researching.
Has anybody else, has anybody else had to face this? Are, are there examples of regulations dealing with this somewhere else?
They've all just been proposed and, uh, other municipalities have had a height restriction. And so I've seen one that's a hundred and thirty feet in Northampton County. Uh, and I, there's one that's actually close to the airport in Hanover Township. I think it's Lehigh County, but they're, they're restricted by our airports. So they're going up fifty feet, but it's a high cube, high automated warehouse, so. They're actually going through the process that we're trying to avoid.
And, and a large warehouse developer will not be afraid to appeal zoning and challenge zoning, but they'll have more than enough resources to do that.
Especially, especially when you combine or you factor in how much these are being leased for a year. Uh, CBRE, right now, the average new lease rate in, uh, the Lehigh Valley is six dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot per year. So if you build a million square feet, that's six point two five million dollars per year. So they will spend the money and get their money back in X amount of years and the average lease is seven to eight years. So they know that this is why we've had our, the whole Lehigh Valleys were within one day's drive of a third of the United States population. So, you know, and this was all really triggered of Sandy when it wiped out the Jersey Shore and Northern Jersey. That they want to be off the coastal zone of storms. And now it, it has become a situation where, oh, now the land's cheap in Pennsylvania, the labor's. Although the labor rate is going up in the Lehigh Valley, I mean, U-line has ads out for twenty-three dollars an hour. And that was unheard of five years ago, you know, for a warehouse job. So it, it's really, it's really sparking, so.
Yeah. And my.
Long as big tracts of ground are still available, that's the preferred option becau- for a developer because it's cheaper and easier to do in the current environment and it's what they're used to. But as large chunks of ground become scarcer, they need to go with smaller chunks of ground, but the warehouses still need to have the volume capacity. So you go up. Why do skyscrapers happen in New York City? Because ground is scarce, as ground gets scarce, you go up.
If you look in that high cube document, the guidance that I helped author, there are pictures and examples of double-decked loading docks and it's, it's amazing what they can do. Now, granted, this is in New York City, but if somebody's doing it there, all the technology, we know how to build them. Let's build them across eighty-four lumber or where, wherever else, you know, so it's. I think it's a, a good to have an internal discussion and see where we could tweak and where our, you know, solicitor could give some guidance and try to maybe not prevent it, but make it difficult to, to implement.
Yeah, and, and.
Or make it best case scenario that we can, so can't find everything.
And, and that's, that's always been my point of view is you, you can't keep anything out, but you can control it to the best of the township's ability. And, uh, you know, that, that's always been my thought. So we may get them, but at least if we make the right ordinance, we can get it as good as we can possibly can.
So I think a good approach may be then to see if these have been singled out as a independent use other than from the warehouse that we already have now. Because if other people are not singling these cubes out as another independent separate use, we already have an ordinance that addresses it.
Correct, and I, and I, I passed some of that research, there's, there's some in Pennsylvania. The problem is, and Mr. Zader knows this very well, Pennsylvania MPC is a whole different animal than the rest of the country. We have to allow all uses, it's, it's, it's. At my work, we have planners come from other states and it takes them a year to figure out how Pennsylvania operates. So there's, I know there's, there, there was proposed ordinances, I don't know if they were implemented or shelved, but I can get that information, so.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good because like, I'm just seeing as if it's not broken, don't fix it. We, we are allowing for the warehouses, we don't find the difference between all these warehouses. And all of a sudden now it's like the height is making it to be another use. So I'd like to see if different municipalities in our area are segregating this cube into a different warehousing component and addressing it in their ordinances that way. Because I feel we have an ordinance that addresses all warehouses, it's a general umbrella for all warehouses.
But, you know, and I'm not going to play the devil, but I know one of the ordinances I looked at. I think it was in Monroe County, where if you went over a certain height, architectural stuff kicked in, it couldn't be a white box, it had to almost look like commercial skyscraper kind of office, you know, rather than this big white thing. So there's, there's various aspects that we might look at and trigger, you know, just so you don't have a white box.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How, how does it look? How does it fit into the character of the township?
Yeah, and certainly, certainly providing. Yeah, certainly providing for protection of view sheds, uh, which means positioning them, you know, permitting them in certain areas with good justification. Like I said, I, I don't think we can keep them out, so let's get the best response, you know.
And we could also layer the airport hazard zoning.
Yes.
There, you know.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a layer, we can layer stuff together, but I, I, I will get all that information, it probably take me a couple of days, but.
Now, I would not say we are keeping them out, we do allow for warehousing use.
Oh, and I agree, I agree, but if we can tweak it to strengthen.
Correct, that I understand, like Brian just said with the architectural component, correct.
Yeah.
But I don't agree with increasing the height.
Yeah, yeah, unless, unless we.
If they want to do that, they can go through zoning and then we could.
Correct, but I do like the architectural component.
I, I see Lee Salt had a, a message, Lee, do you want to add something?
Well, yeah, yeah, because I'm, I'm a little confused. I mean, I, I think, I like David's idea of, you know, let's, let's try to get in front of this before it happens. But I don't understand why we can't, I thought, you know, from previous conversations, our areas of warehouses were running out pretty quickly. And maybe I'm wrong in that point, but why can't we through zoning eliminate that possibility?
Well, and, and I think Joe brought up the point that is a very good point here. If, if someone comes in and argues that a high cube is not a warehouse and if they argue that successfully, then the township's in trouble because they could do a curative amendment, which means they can basically put it almost anywhere. So we want to lessen or minimize that possibility.
Why can't we just eliminate that possibility?
Ah, because you can't keep everything out.
But.
Pennsylvania.
But as Laura said, but as Laura said, we do allow warehousing. So we just don't allow that type of warehousing.
It would be a different use, Lee, if the MPC states we must allow for all uses. If a cube warehouse is defined as a separate use from the regular warehouses that we see now, that's the difference. So somewhere someone has to establish a cube warehouse distinctly different from the existing warehouses that you're seeing now. That can either be done through lawsuits or it can be done via we create an ordinance for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if you create an ordinance for it, that the ordinance has so many different rules and regulations, nobody will ever do it?
No.
No.
Well, okay.
Yeah, the, the, the goal is well, just for, for my opinion, the, the goal would be to get in front of it so we can regulate it from a position of strength opposed to, um, someone coming in and saying, we don't provide for the use. And then they're setting the tone and, and they're, um, setting the rules via Greg said, uh, the curative amendment, that, that puts us in a, in a position of weakness, in, in my opinion.
Control the ship, not let the ship control us.
Exactly.
For a developer, the key they're looking at is ease of approval, time to market and cost. And so what we're talking about here is making the time to market and the challenges more difficult so that South Whitehall is not a prime candidate for high cube warehouses at twelve stories.
And if something is built, that it's best that we could less impact to the surrounding area, you know, architecturally wise, view shed wise. But you can put a lot of triggers in there.
Yes, and, and so long as we provide for it and provide what would be a defensible fair share. We can put it in difficult places. So th- there are strategies, but you have to play the game. So.
How would something like this fit into our comp plan? Because did we think about this as we were going through the comp plan? Is this something that we can look at now or we passed that point? Like, how does this high cube, this new possible thing that could come along? How does that fit in now where we are, Dave? Well, maybe the.
I think Dave fell asleep.
I'm here. You know, one of the things we've been kicking around is looking at ITE as a source for new land uses. Um, ITE is updated frequently, I think yearly and oftentimes they put in cutting-edge land uses. One of the examples, I always go to, it was super convenience store. To Super Wawa was added to ITE, you know, because it's a use that is becoming common and it, you know, they have to come up with trip generation. Um, so one of the things that I'm going to recommend, um, and talk about with the commission and public is, you know, using that as a model for our land uses. So that as these new land uses become prevalent, we're kind of on that cutting edge with the traffic engineers. The other good thing it does is it puts everybody on the same page. So if a developer comes in, they're saying something in ITE and we know what they're saying. And we can, you know, as with regards to the comment of getting ahead of things and being in control of our own destiny is, you know, if we know what's coming and what, but ITE is saying, we can put standards on it that makes the township okay with it. Um, we may not be thrilled that it's here, but we can certainly put a standard that, okay, if we're gonna have it, let's make it, add these restrictions to it. The other piece is something that, you know, we're kind of struggle with a lot is, you know, our land uses don't always have the direct cor- direct correlation with ITE trip generation. And the example of warehousing. There's warehousing, there's high cube, there's fulfillment center, there's, you know, there's like five different categories of warehousing in ITE that all have different trip characteristics. And with regards to looking at impacts and planning for impacts, that is a tool that's out there for a municipality to leverage so that we understand the impacts based on these different types of uses. You know, and it, it kind of becomes a question of how best to incorporate it. You know, and whether it, it stays at the, you know, it, it would be changes to the zoning ordinance and perhaps like the recommendation for a comp plan could be coordinate with ITE. Manual uses, look at it yearly to coordinate or see if we want to update our zoning ordinance to reflect any ITE. So, um, the comp plan could make that recommendation that says, you know, the township moving forward every year should look at IT and submit a report for recommendations or, or if we don't think anything needs to be updated, we could do that. Um, so that's kind of how the whole piece can get incorporated into the comp plan. So, yeah, there was a lot there and there, you know, there's a lot going on in, in my head and Greg and I talk about it and Tony, we, you know, as staff, we're kicking these ideas around. And, you know, the, these recommendations come from staff based on. Um, and, you know, the, these recommendations come from staff based on, you know, a lot of conversations and a lot of research. Um, so, you know, we're definitely thinking about it and trying to figure out the best way to handle it. And again, the comp plan is a tool to make recommendations for zoning or. Um, periodic reviews of zoning and things like that, so that's how it would get incorporated. Sorry for the long answer.
No, that was, that was very, that was very, um, uh, educating. Um, and I just have one question out, this will probably go to Joe. Can, can a new district be created? I don't know what you would label it. Um, obviously something industrial that would house specific. Uh, types of uses like this, or is that some kind of discrimination?
Well, certainly new districts can be created for whatever uses you want to put into them, that's done all the time with zoning ordinance amendments, Laura. As far as trying to deal with this high cube situation, I think it's going to require a lot of brainstorming among. Planning staff, engineering folks, including, uh, traffic engineering. Uh, because tech, tap on something Dave mentioned with IT, yeah, IT does address high cube. But it's the old fashioned high cube of thirty-five or forty feet, not the modern type of potential twelve or fourteen story high cube. With it's automated with two or three level of decking for truck traffic. Uh, it's a whole different animal, and so it's inadequate IT to deal with this kind of, uh, IQ. So until IT catches up with the modern world, you're left either dealing with it or figuring that and then run. And so it's going to take a lot of brainstorming to figure out what the best way is to skin the cat, I don't have all the answers. It's, it's really something that's kind of it's in its infancy, it sounds like Brian's in the forefront of it right now and it's great that. Brian is and he's on our planning commission.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's so new that, uh. Illinois, Iowa and our region actually went to IT to study these. There's only several of them built in the United States, so it's so new, they actually have to do traffic counts at these. In Illinois and Iowa, they're primarily meatpacking facilities right now. But there are some in other countries, Singapore, where, you know, obviously land is. Really scarce and the IT, the meeting I had with them is. It's probably two to four years away from actually getting into the IT trip generation manual. And then it's going to be one of those where it's not a, 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 it's a small sample of studies. So then, you know, as Tony knows, sometimes that's when you only have one or two studies of a facility, you kind of like. You know, you wonder what's going on, so it, it's, it's something that, uh. At, at the LVPC, putting on my LVPC hat. Becky and community planning and transportation were. Presenting all over the country as best as we can to get, uh, we were at the APA, we were everywhere that we can do. And IT is listening and they're kind of like. They want to do the studies, but they also like. Uh, other people to do their work for them, you know, you have to submit, you know, your traffic studies to them. So, um, we don't have one built in our area or I would go out there tomorrow and set traffic counts for these, so. We're relying on our partners across the country that have these built, so that's why it's a several year thing before it hits IT. So hopefully, you know, we can at least tweak or discuss the best way to address these things if one would come in, so. Chances are it's minimal, but you never know, you know, especially as, as Mr. Zader said, land gets more. Valuable or scarce, so you can go up, just like apartment buildings, you know, in, in, in urban areas, you know. We see that in the city of Allentown, they're going higher.
I, I see. I, I see a question from Monica Hodges.
I thank you, you answered it during your discussion, thanks so much.
Oh, good.
Good.
Thank you.
This has been a good discussion, uh, I think here a goal is that we, we probably, maybe try to get something. Worked out as we do the, the, uh, comp plan. To see if we can get something in there a- as we do this.
Right, and then also, you know. Layer in the airport zone, it could be a, it could be a package thing, so.
Uh huh. Okay, good, so to be continued.
Yeah, and it just. The one thing, and I, I just want to put this in there is talking about layers is there's future analysis that we can do. So what you can see from a certain point. Um, is another tool that we can use to kind of find an appropriate. The better place for it, I guess is the way to say it.
Uh huh.
Less impactful areas.
Yes, yes.
Hey, Dave. May I ask a question for you, is, is there, is there a percentage that you have to have? In a township for. Different zoning or different layers, like, you know, four or five, you know.
Joe is smiling.
Yeah, I think that's a million dollar question there, um, I don't think anything's. You know, it's always argued and it can be argued in a million different ways and, you know, there's not, there's no like formula. That says you need X percent of land in this use. Um, it would certainly be helpful for zoning purposes, um, but it. It's such a gray area, I mean, it.
Yeah, there had to be so much, you know, you have to have everything, well, if you have to have everything. Can you have, you know, fifty percent housing? Twenty percent retail, twenty percent warehouse, what we know is. So there's no magical formula that, that's out there that comes up with what you're supposed to be doing.
Lee, let me take a stab at that, there is no bright line test. What the courts have deemed the MPC to require is essentially what's referred to in the law as a quote fair share analysis. And under fair share analysis, probably the most important factor that's considered. Is whether the community is or is not in the path of growth. With South Whitehall being at the crossroads of several major highways. And the pressure that we're seeing for growth, we're clearly in the path of growth. You take a rural municipality in northwestern Lehigh County, much less in the path of growth. Their requirements are going to be different when the judges look at it than ours are, it's not a bright line test, so. Weisenberg and Lynn Township, Heidelberg Township, uh, the courts would look at them much differently than they would look at. South Whitehall Township and it's a matter of exercising. And that's not an easy thing to do because it's very gray, it's very ambiguous and, uh, you do the best you can.
Thank you.
Monica Hodges has another question.
I'm really sorry, thank you for taking this question, um, how was lower Mac able to remove warehousing? From their, from their zoning, are, are they considered saturated or are they? Do they feel that they have met the limit with their warehousing, do they have a high cube warehouse? I mean, I didn't think they did and I know upper Mac just fought it, but how was lower Mac able to remove it?
I will take a stab at that, Monica, um, because candidly, I was involved in a lot of those warehouses that went into lower Mac. Uh, based upon the volume of warehouses in the township at multiple locations, which have developed over the course of many years. And I was not involved in the backstory discussions with the board of commissioners and staff and consultants, but I am guessing. And this is just me speculating, that they sat behind closed doors and had some discussions and maybe some public discussions and came to the conclusion that with. All of the warehouses that have been developed over the course of years at multiple locations, they had enough square footage that they felt comfortable. In stopping future warehouses because they had met their fair share. And when they looked around at some other communities nearby, saw that they had less square footage of warehousing and therefore felt safe. It was an educated guess, but no bright line test. Uh, Upper McConge perhaps could do the same thing, they've got more warehouses than I think any township in the Lee Valley. Uh, so they're in a different situation, uh, you, you move somewhere else and look at, uh, Upper Socken Township. I don't know if they have any warehouses, you know, they'd be a lot more vulnerable in that regard. Uh, but yet they're a little bit farther off the beaten path in terms of the warehouse trucking routes, so. It's all a matter of putting those factors together, uh, reasonable minds can differ, planners can differ, lawyers can differ, judges can differ in their assessments. Uh, it's not an exact science.
And I, I think, I think I made the point that, uh, if we zone for it and the land is taken. It's zoned for it. Um, and if we can defend our fair share of that, um, then we're fine. Um, you know, the, the land is zoned for it, if there's a warehouse already on it, that's not our fault. You can always buy that warehouse, tear it down and put a high cube on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions on the? Okay, again, that's a good discussion, as to be continued, I think, there's a lot, a lot of questions, I think. It's great to hear, we have a lot of, uh, good resources to, uh, to do this and, like I said, I think we should try to figure out something to. So that we can address this, and as David said, you know, uh, in a more proactive position, uh, if we can, uh, but we'll have to see. Um, uh, see what other people have done. Uh, anything else that anybody wants to discuss this evening, Greg?
Next month.
Okay.
Next month we have, uh, thirty-nine twenty-six Lime Kiln Road will return. That's a minor plan you've seen once, they did go to the zoning hearing board, they got their relief, so they're coming back for that lot line. Um. Not, not, not adjustment, but minor subdivision.
Is that, is that the Novak?
Yes. Yes.
That's what I thought.
The other, the other plan we're, we will be seeing next month is Ridge Farm. So I, I think we can probably fit both on the same meeting.
Okay. Good, all right, uh, sounds good, uh. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Right on schedule.
Yeah.
Night everyone. Question for you, Greg, do we, uh, given, given the current state of the, uh, state constitution and everything. Do we have to go back to in person for next month?
Stay tuned.
Yeah, they, they just reinstated the, um. The emergency rule, so, uh, right now, yesterday was we, you have to, have to go back to in person, but that may change tomorrow.
Yeah, and it's, I think Joe said that the press has put that out, but they didn't release the details of that extension. So, you know, we, we've got a couple of weeks before I have to publicly advertise. So you will know when I advertise whether we'll be back in person or virtual again.
They have to read the governor's declaration, basically.
I saw on his page, he was requesting a ninety day extension.
Yeah. Now, I'm not sure, I mean, the extension allows for virtual meetings as opposed to when that lapses. Virtual meetings will become illegal. Now, I don't know if that requires virtual meetings. So, once again, read the, uh. Read the declaration.
Do you have a preference?
Yes. Read the latest version.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night all.
All right, night.
Night.
Good night.